This Village of Green Hills Regular Council Meeting, April 28th, 2015, to order. Have a moment of prayer by Councilmember Walter.
Lord, we ask you to send your Spirit of Servanthood upon all of us gathered here this evening to do your work for the benefit of all in our community. We ask you to bless our elected and appointed officials so they may deliberate with wisdom and act with courage. Bless the members of our community who come here to speak before the council so they may state their cause with honesty and humility. Lord, we ask you to bless us all that everything we do here tonight will move you to welcome us one day into your kingdom as good and faithful servants. We ask this in the name of our brother Jesus. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Clerk Callen Roll.
Brocall.
Here.
Dries.
Here.
Walter.
Here.
Hermes.
Lee.
Here.
Walter.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
Mr. Hermes has excused absence. Okay, approval of minutes. We have the minutes of the March 24th, 2015 Regular Council Meeting and the April 14th, 2015 Meeting Work Session. Any corrections? Hearing no exceptions.
I move to approve the minutes.
Move to approve, yeah, okay. Approval of minutes. All right, this is the time for residents to comment on matters before council or to ask questions of concern to them. When recognized, please come forward to the lectern, give your name and address, and state your comments or questions. Council meetings are taped recorded for the ease of transcription. Comments are limited to two minutes.
Mark, you're first. Your turn, you're first.
Yeah, he got here ahead of you.
I'm Mick Brown. I think most of you know me. My parents raised me here from 1941 until today. This is the neatest little town in the world. One thing that bothers me right now is this selection of trying to get some more money from us, and that's going on the ballot in just a week or so. And why we have a sign across the street, I'm just blown away why we did that. The village people said, 70 percent of them said back in November, whenever, I mean, in January, February, when it was, they said no then, and now they keep on going for it, and keep on going for it, and keep on getting that. And why our village put that sign, allowed that sign to be put up across Wynton Road, I just don't know.
Which sign are you referring to, Mick?
Please.
Which sign are you referring to?
The one across Wynton Road, the sign right at the end of the fire department.
It's the banner, and it's referring to their music.
Oh, okay, okay.
Their music award.
Yep, and we're helping them do stuff that a lot of us can't afford to do anymore, like in the old days. And so I'm asking that you explain this, and I'm asking quite frankly that tomorrow morning, the village administrator go to Dave or whoever's running the important working people tomorrow, and have that sign removed. Thank you.
Can I make a comment? It's interesting because I heard concern about the sign, Mick, and I just want to clarify something. It's not a political sign. I don't feel it's very well laid out on what it emphasizes, but there's nothing political, otherwise we couldn't have put the sign up. It was to commend their award for music education. So, at a quick glance, maybe it looks that way, that it is a political message, but we wouldn't put it up if it was a political message.
No, I think, as always, we all make mistakes, and I think one of the times you've made mistakes. I think you're quite frankly wanting more money and to eventually get rid of our school as a unit, as a village, and I just think you're wrong.
Okay, I mean. No, I appreciate you speaking up. I purposely took a look at the sign. I should have probably copied down the wording, but there is nothing that is in the wording that is promoting, voting for anything. It was solely for the purpose of commending their recognition when it comes to the music school.
I understand, Erin. I'm not worried about yours, Nancy. I am afraid of theirs.
Understood. Thank you.
I'm going to speak about a totally different subject. Apparently you have before you, either now or in the near future, proposed changes to the zoning code, and I'm particularly interested in sign regulations because what you have in there is something I suggested about six months ago, that we have a sunset clause for some of these signs we have in the village. What does concern me is whether that is currently written. I don't have the full thing in front of me. All I have is proposed amendments, and I don't know if I have the complete one. But as when I first saw it, it would appear to apply only to freestanding signs. We only have one freestanding sign that I know of in Village of Green Hills, and that's the old Johnny's Toy sign. All the other signs in the village center area are on the shopping center, and that's what we really need, kinder living care regarding, and enforcement for code and removal of signs. And that's what I was talking about when I was before the council about six months ago. So I think the idea caught on, but I don't know if all of it caught on, because I think you better look at it and see how you can revise it or make sure it does apply to all signs in the village center. And another problem, abandonment of signs. It says, part of it says, add a section 1149.07A. I checked your zoning code about 15 minutes ago, and that applies provisions under the First Amendment. I'm not saying First Amendment, it's not relevant. I just don't think you have the right code number there. It would be under 1149, but it would not necessarily be under 1149.07. It might be .02 something or another. So you might want to check that to make sure we get it, because when we have sloppy draftsmanship as far as ordinance is concerned, you end up with sloppy enforcement, and that doesn't do anybody any good. So it's better if we can get it right the first time, and quite frankly, it's probably easier if you put it in front of the planning commission first. It's a shorter route, but I guess no one's thought of doing that, so if it starts up here, it goes.
What I'm saying, Mr. Willer, what we're doing is we're referring it to the processes. We refer to the planning commission. They have their opportunity to address those issues.
I understand that. What I'm saying is there's more than one way to skin a cat. The quicker way to get a change for zoning is to put it before the planning commission first. They have their hearings, then they refer it to council, and then the council makes its decision after hearing. If you start with council, you start here, you go back, then it comes back. So you save a step if you go in front. So I'm not disagreeing with you.
It adds 30 days. Yeah, we understand.
So that's all I had to say. I just want to check, do your homework, or somebody do homework. Thank you.
Just moments ago, you just approved the minutes as submitted on the March 24th and April 14th, 2015 minutes.
Excuse me, Thad. We have Tony speaking up here. We'd appreciate it if we could just give him your attention. Thank you, though.
Just moments ago, you just approved the minutes as submitted on the March 24th and April 14th, 2015 minutes, the 2015 meetings. I just also want to mention that you need to make a correction to those minutes, including to the so-called approved minutes from the Green Hills Council Meeting Work Session of January 13th, 2015. In each of these minutes, it states that by unanimous consent, Mr. Dries was excused due to a prior commitment. Without objection, council, Glenn Dries was excused. Without objection, Councilman Dries and Minister of Maintenance was excused. Excuse me, but in each of these meetings, the mayor never gave council an opportunity to excuse members from these meetings. No objection was ever presented on the floor to object to in each of these situations. Only council has the power to, by majority vote of council, to excuse absences. Not a word was said pertaining to Dries's absence during Village Council Special Meeting of the January 13th, 2015. This is a fatal procedural error for the mayor not properly excusing members. During the Green Hills Village Council Special Meeting of September 9th, 2014, right after rule call, Clerk Lives interrupted and informed council that they need a motion to excuse Councilman Dries. And prior to start of the meeting of the September 23rd, 2014, Councilman, the Green Hills Council Meeting, Kathy Lives informed the mayor council that they need a motion without objection to excuse members. And these meetings are also missing reasons for said excuse for their absence. As per Rule 21, Rule 23, we have the right to know in the minutes a brief statement of the reasons for making such requests for excuses. I respectfully suggest that for future meetings, that a motion be placed on the floor for proper vote to excuse absences as stated in Rules of Council, Section 203 and 207 of the Charter, which states as determined by majority of council. Members need to hold themselves and each other accountable for complying with these standards. Thank you for your time and your attendance.
All right, moving on. Reports of village officials. Municipal manager, Yvonne Kovak.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to start with the reading of the first quarter of year public record requests. On January 17th, I received a request from Diana Kohler requesting copies of all records pertaining to green belt violations or inquiries since her last request, including the joywood and any others. On January 19th, I received a request also from Diana Kohler requesting all documentation and notes dealing with the electric service which was installed out to the concrete pad on joywood, including permit applications, letters, notes, correspondence, permits, violation notice, inspections, et cetera. On January 17th, I received a request from Diana Kohler for 2014 finance reports, all accounts by account and by vendor, all revenues, all expenditures. On February 21st, I received a request from a Joseph Packard requesting all documents pertaining to any investment advisory contracts in place between the village and any investment management, investment advisory firm or any firms acting in that capacity on investments. Sorry, paper's bent here a little bit. Any invoices pertaining to the same, any recent investment reports or presentations. If no external firm was under contract, provide any reports of detailing investments and cash balances. If we participated in Star Ohio, which we do, please provide any recent periodic reports or simply acknowledge participation or not. Same for Star Plus or a CDARS program. On March 22nd, we received a request from Pat Anwan for all contracts of sale pertaining to 30 Chalmers, 26 Chalmers, nine Chalmers, and three DeWitt. Also, a request for all the Hamilton County Board of Revision complaints in their entirety filed for 25 to 35 Chalmers, 24 to 30 Cromwell, 32 Cromwell, eight family, and 48 Cromwell, another eight family. And on March 23rd, we received a request from Terry Trinan for completed sales contracts for the sale of 14 to 20 Chalmers, 30 Chalmers, 26 Chalmers, one Drummond, three Drummond, 67 Drummond, 80 Drummond, and 82 Drummond, which was the split parcel that went with 80 Drummond. So those were the requests for the first quarter. Now, in the way of other information, we've actually had some exciting days. We had Arbor Day with a participation from the Cooperative Preschool. It was adorable. They sang a song, which was a really cute addition to it. The mayor had also issued a proclamation declaring that date, April 24th, as Arbor Day in the Village of Green Hills. The Willards had donated a tree. It looks just beautiful. It was a really nice day, so that was a lot of fun. Obviously, we are, I'm sure we've all seen that the Wynton Road Phase Two project is well underway.
Yes.
They're hopefully completing all of the milling today because tomorrow, the first, the thick fiber mat goes on, and then about a week later, we should have an intermediate coat that goes on, and then a while after that, the third and final coat. So that's moving along, should be done by mid-May. Don't know if you noticed, but the pool is now filled with water. So it's always a fun sight to see, and we are extending the resident discount through opening day at the pool, so hopefully that'll help us with revenues there. And that concludes my report right now. Thank you.
Questions of the manager?
I just wanted to say that we had a, with Mr. Mayor and the village manager, a nice time at the TCUSA in Wyoming, and then the next one is going to be in West Carlton, but it was a delightful presentation, and we not only got our regular plaque, but we also got the 30-year plaque. So that was really exciting.
Moving on, law director, Jeff Forbes.
Thank you. I guess a couple of items that I can touch on, as I understand it, maybe there were some questions that maybe came up at the last work session, sort of sunshine law, open meeting related questions, and as I understand it, maybe it felt that we should wait till I'm here to talk about those, so let me, I can address both of those issues tonight. As I understand it, the first question, or one of the questions, was related to actually a city nearby, the city of Mason, and press that it got related to a council meeting and related to a rather large economic development project. And I guess here's what I can tell you. I'm intimately familiar with that situation. And what I can tell you is, and I think the valuable lesson that other communities can learn and why I would bring it up tonight, is the question that came up in that case was that city called a special council meeting, and at that special council meeting, they added a topic that was not part of the original notice of that meeting. And there was a, called into question about whether that was appropriate because it would, I think the question was, it seems to not be in accordance with the state law that requires the type of notice that you give for special meetings. And I think the valuable lesson to learn there is that while that argument was made, the response was that the way that special meeting worked was exactly in accordance with that city's charter, because their charter provision had a special provision in their charter about how the notice is given for special meetings, and that at special meetings, by a majority of council, they have the opportunity to add additional items to the agenda of a special meeting that were not part of the original notice. And that is different than the state law. So I think the lesson to be learned there is that if there is a conflict between the state law and your charter when it comes to an open meeting question, your charter actually controls what didn't get as much press. You had to actually look for this article, was the one in a different newspaper where council for the other newspaper basically said, yes, if there's a conflict between the charter and the state law, the charter controls. You don't have to worry about that because your charter, you do not have that extra provision in your charter. So in essence, your charter is actually silent on that, so what that means is you would just follow the state law with respect to notice of special meetings. So that's, I think, the lesson to be learned there, is that know what your charter says and understand that that would control. And in your specific case, you don't have to worry about it because the state, your charter basically mirrors the state law. Okay? So that was the one question. I think the other question was related to a case that has actually just been accepted by the Ohio Supreme Court that's also a public meeting sunshine law question, and this is out of Olentangie Board of Education, which is up around Columbus. I mean, brief summary of that is that some school board members communicated with each other via email, and then at a board meeting, took some action. There was a question or a challenge about whether that email communication that the board was involved in, or most of the board, in fact, all but one member of the board was involved in. I think it's also important to note that the person who filed the lawsuit against the board was the other board member who was not involved in the email exchange. But the basic question was, did this email exchange violate the open meeting law? Did in fact, by having this email conversation, did they deliberate and discuss something that should have been deliberated and discussed in a public meeting? Or, better way to put it, is did this email exchange constitute, for lack of a better word, a virtual meeting? That the public was not, did not have a chance to participate in or observe. So lawsuit was filed, went to the trial court in the Columbus area, trial court ruled in favor of the school board and said, no sunshine law violation here. That email exchange did not constitute a meeting under the terms of the sunshine law. That was appealed, went to the Court of Appeals. The Court of Appeals upheld that. So right now, we have two lower court decisions that basically said that type of email exchange does not violate sunshine law. The appellant there tried to appeal it to the Ohio Supreme Court, which of course is discretionary in this case, and the Ohio Supreme Court accepted the case and said, we think this is one that is worth us looking at and deciding. They have not issued any decision on the case yet, but they've accepted it for review. So I think, again, the lesson to learn in this case is, oh, actually, we won't really know the lesson until the Supreme Court rules on this, but I think what you can look at is, does an email exchange among the majority of members of a body where they're discussing the public business, is that appropriate in light of what sunshine law says? The appellant that is trying to take this to the Supreme Court has basically said that the sunshine law has not really caught up with technology as we have it available to us now, so they are going to ask, they're basically asking the Supreme Court to rule that this kind of virtual, they call it a virtual meeting, would violate sunshine law. So we'll have to wait and see what the Supreme Court says, but as of right now, the two lower decisions say that it's not a violation. We'll see what the Supreme Court says, and then depending on what the Supreme Court says, we will see what the state legislature's response is to that. So there may be changes to the sunshine law coming, depending on how the Supreme Court rules.
How long does something like that take?
It was, I think, last month that the court accepted the case. It hasn't even been briefed yet. I mean, they've set a briefing schedule, so the briefs will be filed. Once the briefs are all filed, they'll schedule, I would assume they'll schedule an oral argument, unless for some reason the parties say they don't want an oral argument, but I'm certain that they will. Once it's argued, months, again, three months, you know, it's versus years. Yeah, I don't think it would be years, but it will, it won't be argued, and you know, and then the next week, a decision will come out.
Sure.
Likely some months after that. So we'll continue to monitor it, as I do all those types of cases that go to the court, and we'll see. And again, the response will be, depending on what the court says, we'll follow that, and then depending on what the court says, the state legislature may choose to make some changes to that law. But I think those were the two items that were of question. And if that's all, then that would conclude my report.
Any other questions?
Just with the idea of the virtual meeting as you presented there, would you care to speculate if there is anything in the future plans, for example, to have a council meeting when a member of council is absent, to have it virtually here?
Well, I can tell you right now, the law prohibits that.
Okay.
Right now, the law says you have to be present in person to be counted toward the quorum and to participate. I think there have been cases where, I mean, I suppose a council member could call in and, you know, on speakerphone or something and be, and listen, but unless you're physically present, you don't count as a quorum, toward the quorum. You don't get to vote, you don't get to participate, and that's part, the law is very clear on that now. Will it change? What I would tell you is the technology moves at a much faster pace than the state legislature. And I'm not saying that's a bad thing, but I wouldn't anticipate that type of change.
Thank you.
Okay, clerk of council, Captain Lives.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The April 2015 community calendar and resolution numbers 2015-04F and ordinance number 2015-02F were posted as required. Additionally posted as required were the April 16th Recreation Commission meeting, the April 27th Orange Committee meeting, and the April 28th Planning Commission meeting, along with the cancellation of the April 27th Streets and Services Committee meeting. And if there are any questions, that would conclude my report.
Any questions? Hearing none. Chief of Police, Neil Verlman.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. During the month of March, we investigated three accidents. That's down from five the same time last year. Two crimes, it's down from three last March, 249 other incidents. Total of 763 contacts were made. 309 were dispatched or received by telephone as compared to 135 last March, and 454 were self-initiated by police officers. The department provided assistance to the public in 96 instances, assisted other agencies 56 times. During the month, we made 38 criminal arrests and 85 traffic arrests. We did have some no-cost training. It was actually very good training, specialized training. Several of our officers attended an active shooter training that was instructed by the training supervisor in Forest Park at the high school, and they used simunitions or simulated non-lethal training ammunition. The instructors trained our officers for the response of an active shooter situation at a school. Two of our officers participated in a defensive tactics school that covered taser usage, takedown maneuvers, ground defense, weapons retention, and a review of all applicable court decisions. On a related note, the school district forwarded booklets to us of emergency management responses that they've developed at their school buildings. We've submitted input in that and continue to meet with them on some tabletop exercises, and we have now loaded all of that data into our in-house computers, as well as the computers in our cruisers. We did receive two new computers at headquarters, which were installed for us by Chip Burquist from Waycross Media in our booking room and in our patrol supervisor's office. They replaced some outdated systems with software that was subject to data breaches. Chief Demossi, who is with the Mount Healthy Police Department, formerly Cincinnati Police, he and I met with clerk of courts Tracy Winkler last month. In an effort to streamline some procedures, they have regulations in place that require us to take down within a certain time limit, typically the next day, any kind of transfer or appeal from our mayor's court, and also any kind of paper copies of domestic violence arrests. Chief Demossi and I maintain that in today's age with technology, that it may be more amenable and certainly more efficient for us to transfer that data through the use of scanned documents with a follow-up of the original at some point in time. Clerk Winkler was very agreeable to looking at that. She is going to review it in. She is going to review it in-house and with her IT people, and then we'll be meeting with the presiding judge, and Chief Demasi and I will participate in that meeting as well. All parties on our end have now signed the agreement with the Attorney General for increased collection services. We believe this will broaden the impact of our collections, and we continue with our in-house collections as well. And as a last note, I know that most of you are aware that we made heroin trafficking arrest in our community within the last month, and I'd like to take advantage of this forum just in the event any drug dealers might be tuned in. We'd like to advise them very seriously to discontinue those type of efforts. We're ready. We're able to continue those efforts, and they do continue. We have a strong affiliation with the Drug Abuse Reduction Task Force. And if someone wants to proceed and continue with that type of illicit and illegal activity in our community, we're ready for them. We'll take their cars, we'll take their houses if they've got them, we'll take their money, and we'll deprive them of their freedom. So if they want to persist in that action, we're ready for them. But we hope that they don't. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. And any questions of the chief?
Just a comment, Chief. You and I have had a conversation multiple times already this year, regrettably, that being a cop is a hard job, and it's harder in recent days and months than it probably has been in your career because you didn't start in the 1960s. And I just wanted to thank you and your officers, and you know, you, you see officers on patrol and you think, man, what are they doing? It's a really hard job. I've got a family member who's on duty in Littlemore tonight, and it's a really hard job. So thank you for your officers and all that they do.
Thank you, sir.
Very good. See, the fire chief isn't here. Anybody have anything to report for the fire chief? Hearing none.
Everything, we had a traffic and safety meeting yesterday, and maybe you can pick that up then.
Yeah, I'll pick it up in traffic and safety.
All right. All right, and I have, for the mayor's report, audited court receipts for the month of March. The county received $99, state $2,867, and the village of Green Hills $14,614.84 for a total amount of $17,580.84. Also, Maria touched on it, we attended Tree City Awards in Wyoming last Friday, Friday a week ago.
Yeah.
When was that? Anyway, it was a nice day, and Green Hills received this, what do you call it, trophy, I guess, for-
Cut glass.
Cut glass, something, for 30 years in the Tree City program. And I, you know, I'm kind of proud of the fact that 30 years ago, I started the village into that program, got the village nominated for it and accepted into the Tree City program. And you can see all, each year that we received a leaf for it. And I think when we started there, the city of Cincinnati was in it a year before us, and I think us and Terrace Park were in the second year. And so the, the early meetings for the Tree City Awards could be held here at this table, and now you need a hall to, to hold it because there are so many cities in southwestern Ohio now that are part of the Tree City program. But it's a good program, and the village has always had a reputation for wanting to have a tree cover canopy over the village. It was started by the federal government, and the people following their days of tree plantings continued on. And I think the town is better for it. It's cooler. Just makes life nicer in town. So that's all I had to report. Committee reports, community development, Mr. Holger.
Yes, a couple of things. One is, we had, I should say, I have talked about looking at our brand as a community and updating that. I'm hoping to get back on, on top of that. I think we could possibly, and I'm just throwing this out for discussion, refine our logo a little bit. I think that just keep the essence of what we have, but I think it's something that we should maybe update slightly. Some of the graphics that are used, I think, could use a little bit of a bolster. Also, as we prepare for our community development meeting in June, if the community has thoughts as far as what they would like to be, see happening and what's under our control, I often hear, you know, a lot of suggestions about whether it's school district or shopping center, or some things that we have minimal control of. I know that we are going to continue to stay on top of the zoning and, and pursue the violations that are, that have cropped up now and then. It does sometimes seem like chasing our tail because sometimes the violations are addressed but in a very short-term manner, but we have to treat them as addressed. I know that one of the things that came up was sidewalk at the shopping center being uneven and a hazard, and there was just some concrete poured over that difference that I'm not sure is there at, at the present moment. But when it's reoccurring like that, we do have to stay on top of it, and I know that's our goal, but prefer a long-term fix. And also, you know, I see it every year in the spring where the litter, you know, once the snow melts, we see the litter along the side of the roads. I, I really would like to encourage people to, you know, residents, I know it's not your job, but if you do see litter out front, it just makes a big difference if you can pick it up. And we've had cleanup days, and those are good, but they're short-lived, it's a short period of time. I, I think we should, you know, definitely take pride in our community, and, and yes, it doesn't seem fair when someone throws a Coke bottle up the window in front of your place, or even your neighbor's place, but it does make a difference if we police, you know, the streets a little bit and along those lines. It makes it a lot, it makes the community look a lot better. And that is all I have at this time.
Jeff, the, the date for the community development meeting in June?
I knew you would ask me. I, I have it, but I do not have it with me, and that is my fault. Maybe I can look it up on the calendar and give it at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
Twenty-second of June. Thank you.
Oh, that's right.
I meant, yeah, the 22nd of-
Thank you. Move on. Any other comments or questions? Moving on, traffic and safety, Councilmember Brokaw.
We met yesterday. The chief hit on a lot of the stuff we talked about. One of the things we did talk about is he is working on updating their general orders, and once we have that further along, we'll give a more in-depth update on that. I had asked a question because I saw in the media that there was a gun at the Winton Woods Middle School, but then it said Forest Park, so I wanted some clarification. And of course, unfortunately, it was misinformation. It was in Forest Park. It was at, probably Winton Forest, so it was not in Green Hills. So I was concerned about that, and when it said a Forest Park officer is when I thought that there might be some miscommunication by the press. The fire department, we did talk a little bit. The Quint, I believe, has been paid off, and two of their vehicles have been listed so that they could get rid of them. They have new windows, and I believe that's all we really discussed yesterday. We did discuss Damon Road currently. We've, it does not qualify for speed bumps, but that's something we'll continue to hear, take information about, but right now the county, or-
If the county recognizes it as a through street and therefore it can reduce speed bumps.
And then we also wanted to have, ask a question of the mayor, if there was a historical reasoning for the parking. It's not consistent. Like, sometimes it's on the east, sometimes it's on the west, and we didn't know if someone had asked a question on that. And sometimes it's on the side of the fire hydrant, and sometimes it's not. Was there any kind of this-
When I came here, I just basically inherited what the pattern was of parking. The only exception was that we changed the parking on Cromwell. And so you notice that Damon had switched its sides, and the reason it was changed there is because it gave us more parking places. So when it was all on the right side, we lost some spaces there by the church and Drummond and Damon. And when we switched to the other side, we picked up more parking. So that's, but that's the only street. Everything else has been carried on like, like it was in the 1950s. And, and it seemed to work, so, you know, we didn't think about changing. And, and of course, Mr. Brown out there would know that his street is the only one outside of Jennings that there is parking on both sides of the street. And, and that has caused some questions over the years, but when I was manager, I wasn't about to attempt to make a change on their street. They were all happy with it, and the fire truck could still get down there, and so we left it that way.
Chief of the Fire Department uses the hard street to train his drivers.
Yeah, right, right. Yeah. Okay.
Great.
Anything else?
The only thing, other thing we discussed was moving. Currently, we have our meetings the Monday of the week of council regular session, and we discussed having it the Monday prior so that if there was anything that needed to be put on the agenda, there would be time to do it. So our next meeting is going to be moved to, I had my calendar up, May 18th. It was supposed to be the 25th, and we'll continue to move them a week ahead of time to meet that need.
Okay. Great. Any questions?
I just have a couple of comments. Many years ago, there was a question, I would say about the last five to eight years, there was a question on Damon about the bumps and, you know, they put a speed bump there. The reason for it being that it's very seldom, anybody stopped on the stop sign? And the risk of children running. In fact, people would not even stop when the school bus would put the signs out delivering the, the children there. So for a while, a lot of the neighbors kept calling the police department to do, to do the-
Enforcement.
Enforcement on that. Of course, I mean, it was, they were on the street there, not, not even 20 seconds, and immediately they would get the people that were going through. Now, the reasoning for the speed bumps that was given at the time was that it was very dangerous for the fire engines when they had to come at a certain speed to go through any emergency vehicles to go through those bumps. And that was the one, the one explanation that was given from council and at the time, and I'm talking about, I said, like between five and eight years ago, when first came to, to life. And since then, in the summer, a lot of residents that are around that stop sign do a lot of gardening and, you know, things outside to keep an eye on it and be able to call the police department for that. Because there are some of the, the little kids that just would run, and they would not be savvy about to stop, and even though they are being rehearsed by mom and dad, you know, you stop first, and you go through the crosswalk and so forth. And one of the neighbors, I think three or four dogs that had left the home inadvertently had, had had problems with, with the cars as well. So that was back then what the discussion was. I don't know if the trucks or the emergency vehicles have changed something that would make that a solution. I don't know.
I, well, with it being a through street, we just cannot put them on there. And I know it's, also, I know it's hard on snowplows for the speed bumps, and it causes greater wear and tear. I know we've come across that in my professional life, so I do know that's also a concern.
What is a solution? What is, what is an alternative?
Enforcement. Just residents, please call. If you see someone breaking the traffic laws, call in. If you notice it's a pattern of time, let us know that. That way, we can give our officers at least some like, okay, you know, instead of getting there after the fact, if you know it always happens around 3:30, then let us know, and then we can make sure someone's there at 3:25 if it's a pattern. Just, I mean, it's just enforcement. It's just awareness and let the police chief know if they notice something going on, and the police will happily enforce.
There also have been, and I don't know where we stand today, but the village used to retain a traffic safety engineer for advice on these items. And he said there have been studies made on speed bumps that it slows up the drivers who usually don't speed. It doesn't slow up the drivers that go fast because if a car goes over the speed bump faster, it's less of a jolt to it than going over it slow. So in addition to the problems that it causes for trucks, which have hardly any suspension play, like a fire truck, salt truck, tractor-trailer truck, it impedes them, causes issues with them.
The snowplow.
But, right, and the snowplows. I don't know if you know, a number of years ago, the park district put a bunch of them in and ended up taking out a bunch of them then. But if you ran over those at 50 miles an hour, it didn't bother you as much as if you went over it 15 miles an hour.
Not that he's advocating that.
Right. Not that I'm advocating that. And that the engineer also, who is now retired, I think, but he was a professor at UC, and I regarded him highly, you know, stressed the fact, you know, when people were requesting stop signs, you can't use stop signs to control traffic speed and that sort of thing. That's not one of the issues you're allowed to use. But stressed the fact that the sooner children learned to be aware of people violating the laws, speeding, running stop signs, the better for them because, you know, they're going to go out into the world and face this all over. And, you know, part of his issues in training children to cross streets and things like that was the concern we always had on Winton Road, where the speed is higher, and even though we have weight walk lights, you know, people need to learn to use them and then need to be aware of their surroundings, of what's going on. So, but, you know, it's a never-ending battle. I mean, we've had speeders in town running stop signs, and then we have some local people who have complained about people running stop signs who, in some years, ended up getting a ticket for running a stop sign.
If I could comment too, because I, that, the fact that it's a through street isn't the only reason. That, that's kind of the main reason that would stop us right there, but just to tack on and reiterate what the mayor's saying, there's, there are a lot of factors to consider. Certainly the emergency vehicles. We do have a large business down there that does require an emergency vehicle on a regular basis, the speed limit on the street, and then we even have to think about where catch basins located, what kind of curbs do you have? That speed bumps, people think they're an answer, and they create a whole different set. A lot of communities that I'm familiar with, they had issues with, people hit them so fast, they go airborne, or they flip, or, you know, you just never know what the circumstances might be, but, you know, it's usually not the right answer. They've come up with some different styles now, but those can be available only in very limited conditions, something called a speed table, and that really is not a good use for any of those mechanisms.
Enforcement seems to be our best solution. The one intersection that, that I've received a number of letters concerning it, we've added in the reflecting strip down the stop sign. You know, I've asked the chief to give me some accident statistics. There have been, there's only been one accident at that intersection. I checked with the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, who's been there forever to see if we've had, ever had any serious accidents, and nobody can recall a serious accident at that intersection. We've had serious accidents in places on the street, but none at that intersection of Damon and Springdale. And, you know, we've had worse problems- And, you know, we've had worse problems in some other places in town, so, you know, I mean, that doesn't calm the individual that sees this, but, you know, I mean, that's just the fact of life, that, you know, we, you have people who don't always obey the law like they should, all over the place. Okay, moving on. Is that it? Okay. Recreation, cable television.
Finance and audit.
Oh, fi, sorry.
It's okay. I'm a patient man, I'll wait.
Mr. Grease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Finance and Audit Committee met yesterday. March financials were reviewed. Our year-to-date income tax is 10.8% greater than in 2014 through March 31st. Our year-to-date real estate taxes are $10,000 less than in 2014. Our general fund revenues are 3.88% better than 2014, and our general fund balance as of March 31st, 2015, is $1,171,944.60. Year-to-date expenses are $387,139.09. The questions that the committee had for Matt were answered with regard to the financial report. We discussed the budget timeline as proposed by Matt. The tax budget will be prepared by May 29th. We will have a public hearing tentatively on June 9th, and then the proposed passage of the tax budget would be June 23rd. I will hold the discussion of the authorized, authorization of transfers and advances till we do the resolution. The bonds that are currently being refinanced, we should hear by May 1st on a new interest rate on those. Those are out in the marketplace right now. As you are aware, we are up for an audit this year. The auditor's office has awarded the bid for the audit for Green Hills, but we have not been notified as to whom it will be. And since this involves revenue, I guess this is a little stretch for the finance report, but I'll make it anyway. The Junior Golf League, which there's a fee for, so there's revenue, will be on Fridays at nine o'clock in the morning, so if you have a young aspiring golfer, male or female, you can sign them up for Junior Golf. That's the end of my report.
Questions or comments? Mr. Grease. Hearing none. Recreation, cable television. Anybody want to report for Mr. Hermes? Have anything? No? Okay. Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Committee for Intergovernmental Affairs, Laws and Rules, met yesterday on April 27th. The topics that, that were discussed were some proposed changes to the employee handbook by staff, those, as, as well as a, a list of supplemental questions that, that were, was presented for clarification. Those changes, once further discussed by staff, will, will come to the council at some, a future date. Also, a follow-up on the vicious dog ordinance that, that we, we were considering, after further discussion with, with the chief, he's comfortable with leaving that, that current ordinance that we have on the books as is. He's comfortable, his officers can address that, and, and really, in clarifying that, it, it seemed as if we were already at the point that we're, where the fees and the penalties involved with those incidents were consistent with what we were trying to do anyway. Well, we also discussed a proposed change in enforcement regarding garage doors that, that would be, would take place rather, rather than an amendment or addition to the current section, section would, would be just a clarification in the current enforcement. That was some total of our meeting, and so if you have any questions, we'd be happy to answer them.
Hearing none. Services and Streets, Councilmember Walther.
Well, as we welcome the, the changes on Winton Road, the face to you, the pavement has started April 27th. I mean, we just, I knew it immediately, because I got a text from my husband saying, "We've started on Winton Road." That's all it said. I knew what was happening. And you explained all of that in great detail. The painting on the service building, we are still waiting for that. It's under their warranty, but with the changes of the weather that we have, with the frost, et cetera, back and forth, it's not advisable at this time, and we'll have to wait for the vendor to reschedule, to do the scheduling for the painting of the service building. Malloy's, the service department is replacing one of the back decks at Malloy's that had rotted significantly. And those are the main things. We didn't have a meeting, because we are still waiting with great anticipation with some monies from, coming from Hamilton County, and the meeting has been postponed, several times have been canceled, and it's the, the big meeting is tomorrow, where they try to make it there, with the commissioners' meetings, and there's going to be a competition of parking with the Reds, I believe, tomorrow as well. So we'll see who wins on that one. I wanted to also tell Mr. Mayor that on 4/13, I was present at the Spina Chifman Committee, and there were still several things that is on, on planning, having to do with that. We were invited to attend one of the organizational meetings for the curriculum at the time. I also wanted to tell Mr. Mayor that Eddie Deschamay sends his regards. He's official, official now as candidate for presidency for the Congo. And I don't know if you remember, last summer, he came here, and he thinks that the answer of all his problems is to have a second Green Hills there. I went to the Good Catch game, representing Green Hills, on 4/26, although the game, very seldom occurs, was postponed. They had some choir waiting for the National Anthem, which the school is going to be dismissed by the time we, they, they have a Good Catch date again. They waited and waited. We had the chief, fire chief from Finney Town, that he had to go. So we're rescheduling that actual, the first pitch and the catch for May the 30th. But we were, it was interesting to be sort of in the bowels of the, of the stadium and having all this secrecy on how to get there, and human beings surrounding you every step of the way, even to go, even to go to the bathroom, you could not be left alone. But it was, it was all in good fun, and we just waited hour after hour, and finally the game, we left, because we said we couldn't wait any longer. We had, we had arrived there at 11 o'clock, and we were there until 3:15, and at that point, they said, "They may not call the game off, but we can't stay any further," especially when the fire chief had to leave. He received a call and had to go. I attended the Laws and Rules meeting on Monday with Chairman, Mr. Lee. And tomorrow, in case you don't remember, we have the Hamilton County Municipal Legion, we have the, the meeting that we have now every three months, instead of every month that we used to have inside of Fairfax, and I had accepted to, to attend there. I will give you some reports back when I do come back with the latest news there. And that's my report for today. Thank you.
What is going on with the painting of the service building? Is there a warranty issue?
The paint is peeling, it's peeling down, it's separating, and there is a warrant involved.
Right.
So it will be taken care of, but because of the changes in the weather at this time, cannot be done.
Okay.
So we are waiting for the vendor.
Is it just a little section or a big section?
Big.
Really?
Yes, 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 yes.
All right.
I know. It's amazing.
Okay, thank you. All right. Moving on, general orders and unfinished business. Ordinance number 2015-03-LNR. Ordinance authorizing the village clerk to forward to the Green Hills Planning Commission proposed amendments to the Green Hills zoning code for review and recommendation. And this will be a second reading. Mr. Lee?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I move that we read the ordinance by title only, instead of its entirety.
Second it. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Move that we accept ordinance number 2015-03-LNR. Ordinance authorizing the village clerk to forward the Green Hills Plan, to the Green Hills Planning Commission, proposed amendments to the Green Hills zoning code for review and recommendation.
We have a second?
Second.
Was I supposed to second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Ready to go. Roll call.
Roll call?
Aye.
Grease?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Okay. Ordinance 2015-03-LNR passes. New business. Resolution 2015-14-F. Resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers. Mr. Grease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 2015-14-F. Resolution making supplemental appropriations and transfers, whereas the 2015 annual appropriations were adopted on January 27th, 2015, and are amended for new information regarding the cost of construction, and whereas appropriations must not exceed total available resources of the village per Ohio Revised Code 5705.36A5, therefore, an amended certificate of estimates, estimated resources has been requested from the county budget commission. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the council of the Village of Green Hills, Ohio, Section 1. Since certain actions are needed and the money is appropriated, so to permit the Village of Green Hills to meet its fiscal obligations for the year 2015, the following items of expenditure are to supplement the appropriations for expenditure for the year 2015. Fund 4901, Other Capital Projects Fund, prior appropriation, $109,388. Appropriation change, $46,704.75. Revised total, $156,092.75. Section 2. The following transfers of funds may be made, be made from previously appropriated monies. Transfers from general fund to swimming pool fund, transfer amount $20,000. General fund to general obligation bond retirement fund, $187,260. Section 3. This resolution shall take effect and be in full force from and after the earliest date allowed by law. Mr. Mayor, I move with the passage of this resolution.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second to pass Resolution 2015-14-F. Any comments?
Yeah, I'll make some comments. There are actually two things that are going on here. A supplemental appropriation of an additional $46,704.75. This is the additional monies that we need to appropriate to finish paying for the capital project. And then the other piece is transfer of funds from the general fund to two different funds. We anticipated, we budgeted for $50,000 to go to the swimming pool. This is $20,000 that's being transferred into the swimming pool at this time. And then $187,260, that is receipts from the sale of real estate, will go into the general obligation bond retirement fund, 3101, and this will allow the, us to take the money that was from real estate and pay down the principal on one of our bonds. So that's the purpose of the appropriation and the purpose of the two transfers.
And the capital project, can you be more specific?
That was money we already received.
From Water Works.
From Water Works. Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah.
We have received the money from the Water Works.
It's Water Works.
And then we will pay it out for the completion of the project.
Thank you. Winton Road project.
Yep.
And the $20,000 for the pool, that was budgeted for, it's just now that we have to pay for that.
Yes, we budgeted it. We planned on transferring money from the general fund to the swimming pool fund, and that's what we're doing.
Okay. All right, so it's been moved in second. Pass Resolution 2015-14-F. Roll call, please.
Grease?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Walther?
Aye.
Roll call?
Aye.
Resolution 2015-14-F passes. Okay, calendar.
Traffic and Safety will meet May 18th at 4:30.
All right. Well, I might add, we have an election, is it May 5th?
Yes.
On bond issue, so remind all residents that are tuned in to be sure to vote. If you have a concern for your community and your tax dollars and how they're spent, you need to let it be known how you feel. And hearing.
The pool.
Pool, pool's opening?
The pool is opening.
And just, I don't know if you want to note the 622 Community Development meeting, even though it's.
And the golf course is already open, so get it on your calendar, because it looks great.
Okay.
And actually, I played once.
They have a tournament coming up, Memorial Day weekend as well.
There is a Memorial Day tournament there also, yep.
Street and Service is the last Monday of the month if we have something to discuss, and hopefully we have something to talk about.
Laws and Rules will be right after that meeting, on the 25th.
At 10 o'clock.
Okay.
The 25th is Memorial Day.
That is Memorial Day.
Oh.
Oh.
So you might.
We might revise that.
Get together and publish something else at the work session.
How did, how did the 25th get to be Memorial Day?
Early.
Yeah.
Because it was the 26th last year.
That's right. Get your pool membership.
Okay. Any other further business?
We'll get back to you on that.
We don't have anything from the American Legion for Memorial Day, anything.
Well, we placed a call to them, they are working on plans, they don't have anything solidified at this point, and you're going to let us know when they do.
So where would our residents be able to find out? Are we going to put something on the website, or word of mouth, or both, or?
Probably both.
It'll probably be in the journal too.
I think they usually do something around 10:00 or 10:30.
Yeah.
In the mornings.
And they, they'll be adjourned well before then.
We can mention it at the work session if we know by then.
Yeah.
All right. Hearing no further business, we're adjourned.